Welcome our guests, glad you guys are here and you're in for a treat. We're going to have a Farmington School Board meeting. And I'm going to ask Ms. Maxwell to give a reminder of what the board does.
As the Board of Education, our internal school health power to the Lord, my own section and the public body. As an individual member of the board has full authority, full power. As the body of the board, the board collectively votes powers and responsibilities. These powers are exercised transparently during public meetings. Some of the key powers and duties of the board include developing educational policies for the school district in accordance with relevant laws and regulations. Hire and supervise the superintendent. Review and improve the school district budget. Damage property acquisition, disposal, and maintenance. Representing the school district in all legal matters, issuing bonds and managing financial resources. Providing oversight, placing class at each school within this four days. Administrative and operational functions of the school district that do day-to-day operations handled by or under the superintendent and district staff. As a board, superintendent and district staff review the following collectively. Periodically reviewing activity policy to align with educational goals and legal requirements. Evaluating the effectiveness of school operations and educational programs.
Just a reminder, all board members are in attendance tonight. Each board member will identify themselves when speaking and all votes will be by roll call votes. Any guests wishing to provide public comment or asked to complete a public comment request form located on the table just outside the entrance and the card should be placed in the basket at the sign-in table. As a reminder, comments related to board responsibilities may be passed on to the board for consideration. Comments related to administrative responsibilities or requiring further investigation may be passed on to administrative personnel for consideration. Personal attacks upon board members, staff personnel, or other persons in attendance are absent by individuals who wish to provide public comment or discouraged. Guests will be called upon under the limited public forum section of the meeting. Guests submitting a form will be acknowledged and will have three minutes to state their comment or question. Guests are not allowed to share their time with other guests. A total of not more than thirty minutes will be allowed for all public comments. At this time, I've asked Ms. McWilliams to do the honor of sharing good things happening in the district.
Yes, we are thrilled to recognize about standing accomplishments by our students. Taven Anderson from Pedro Vista High School, who was recently named the Presbyterian Medical Services Athlete of the Week, performed front and center in the Disney Parade. What an amazing, amazing achievement, Taven. Thank you for representing us. Congratulations to Jay B. Hill and Alex Serrano from Farmington High School for being selected to play on the red team in last Saturday's All-Star football game. And Alexander Ortiz from Pedro Vista High School for making the green team. This is a fantastic opportunity for our student athlete to shine on a big stage. And finally, a big round of applause for our most recent spelling bee winner. At Esperanza Elementary, we have first place Baden Finale, second place Miavascas, third place Alternative, Carter Sorrento. And from Mesa Verde Elementary, congratulations to Lucien Hudson and Sidney. The top two winners from each participating school will go on to compete in the FMS spelling bee next month. Good luck, students. I can't wait to see you succeed.
Item number four, consideration to adopt the agenda. Vice President Corley, I recommend the board approve the agenda as written.
Allo, Congress Stradling.
Second.
Second, Lisa Smith.
Vote, vote, Ms. Williams.
Right.
Maxwell.
Hi.
poorly, I, Mr. Stradlin.
Yes, hi.
Number five, recognition of student, staff, and patron. That is recognition of PBE High School Theater for the NMAA State Championship One Act Competition. Presented by Tyler.
Good evening, board members and Mr. Deal. So I am Tyler Grayson. I am with the Pedro Vista High School Theater. And as you know, we are the state champs for twenty twenty-four, so let's give them a round of applause. And I am here tonight with some of my students. So my students, if you could please stand with me, Robyn. These are just a few of who are representative of my theater group. In total, I have about twenty-five who went to go compete this year. We were at Rio Rancho High School, so not too far away. And we took a show called The Yellow Boat. So The Yellow Boat is a super sad story. It is a true story about an eight-year-old named Benjamin Zar who develops AIDS as a result of a faulty blood transfusion. And we got great scores. With those being first-place winner, we got first stage backstage crew, so yay that. We got second place stage management, well, with our stage manager Kath Deason and Jenny. We got second place lights and sound with our light board operator Maximilian Packy and our soundboard operator Destiny Setagini. And also at the competition, you get to compete in what's known as the Spies. So you rehearse a different scene so it can be seen, a musical solo, a musical theater duet, anything imaginable you can do. And we've had one for a couple people qualified for internationals that are in Indiana in June. So that's Peter Mayu and Abby Allen, which won the highest score and they got to perform and they will be going to international in June. Along with going to internationals, our theater troupe as well will be going to internationals. We received the highest score out of everyone in the state. And so New Mexico finally got picked for Chapter Select, which means one show gets to go from New Mexico. New Mexico hasn't been picked in five to ten years, so it's a big, big deal. And so Pedro Vista will be representing New Mexico at International this year in June, which is going to be June twenty twenty-five. So yay. And we would also, as Pedro Vista High School Theater, would like to personally invite the board members, Mr. Deal, everyone in this room to come to our encore performance of The Yellow Boat on January twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth at seven o'clock. And that is at the Toronto Christmas Performing Arts Theater. We would so love to have each and every one of you to see what our students are doing. It's, they're doing great work up at the high school. And thank you to Mr. Thur and all the admin at PBE for supporting what we do. And we couldn't do it without also your support as well. So thank you so, so much for everything you're doing. Thank you.
Recognition of the M E A Administrator here, Dr. Casey Kelly, presented by Daniel Fair.
Unfortunately, both of our next recognitions are set today, so I'll just be real brief about them. But Dr. Kelly was nominated for the Administrator of the Year by Mr. Jackson, our van director at Heights, when she was the Assistant Principal at Heights last year. Notifying a lot of the work that she did on the scheduling and the support that she gave to the program. And this is a state-wide honor, so each region throughout the district, throughout the state nominates a person for that award. And so she was competing against five or six other people and won that selection. She'll be recognized at the New Mexico Music Educators All-State Business Luncheon Friday, January tenth in Albuquerque during our conference. And then Mr. Jensen was recognized by the New Mexico Art Educators Association with the distinguished, President's Distinguished Award. And the president is to kind of select that person out and from Travis's work that he does at the state level, always presenting workshops and conferences and being a great mentor in our area. I got to write the, the letter of recommendation for his award and just like, he's just a great teacher. Every time I'm in there, the kids are always doing great things, especially with ceramics, and ceramics is hard. So they're always got great, fantastic students and he's a great mentor to the other teachers in the district as well.
Thank you. Opportunity for guests. He's doing something else.
Where, did we get pictures of that?
They prefer. Nobody online? Nope. No? Oh, sir, sorry. You move on.
I will.
You got them.
Yes.
Right, a big honor.
Item number seven, reports from superintendent, staff, and board. Reports were provided to the board members and are linked to this meeting's agenda. Item number eight, the consent agenda.
Yes, Vice President Corley, I recommended the board approve items A through A to B on the consent agenda as presented.
Motion?
Motion, Liam. Second, Congress Stradling.
Vote, vote, Ms. Williams.
Right.
Maxwell.
Hi.
For, I, I, Mr. Stradlin. Blow down. Item number nine, Board of Education, reading step changes policy J dash three, four, zero, zero, student inter interrogation, searches, and arrests.
Yes, so Vice President Corley, members of the board, we would like to consider this for a reading step. It was brought to me by our safety team in regard to some confusion with our administrators when these things happen. One, our policy only says student interrogation, searches, and arrests. So we wanted to add interviews at the top. You'll see if you want to add in red. And then stay the same, interviews and interrogation. Sorry. You'll see there change from cross out the interviews, so we add interviews and interrogations. Cross out what's in black, add what's in red. And essentially, I guess without, I'll tell you in a nutshell is, is that any time we come in contact with a student by an outside agency, we want to notify the parents prior, whether it's an interview and interrogation, prior to any of that happen. So that always hasn't been the case. And Mr. Bodie, I don't know if, if there are any questions. Mr. Bodie is here and can talk of a couple examples on maybe some of the confusion if, if, or the reason why they brought it. So if you want to speak to that a little bit?
So this year, we've probably had more calls from principals than we've ever had in the past about this. Part of it is the old policy just said interrogations at the top and all it talked about was interviews. We have very young law enforcement agencies right now because of high amounts of retirements and turnovers. And in the past, we always had SROs that were coming in to talk to students. Now it's not uncommon for street officers or other agencies that would normally funnel through Farmington PD to come talk to our students, they're showing up at our schools. So for example, we had Marshall Service show up the other day. We've had CYFD coming up with, with some some requests that we've never had before. We've had JPO coming in and, and coming into our schools and asking to come in and do some things at the schools that they've never done before as well. And so the principals, and so when they would come in, they'd say, oh, I don't need the parents because I'm doing an interrogation or I'm just doing an interview or something like that. And everything got a little muddled. So at the request of several of our principals, we looked at it to try and give them some better guidance. This is the difference between an interview, this is the difference between interrogation. At the end of the day, it's not going to matter. We want you to contact the parents no matter what. But this way, even when they're talking to the parents, they can tell them the police are here to do an interview. The police are here to do an interrogation and that's what, this is what this means. So that was, it was at the request of a couple of them, but it's just a little different world right now because of manpower issues with law enforcement.
Call for more clarity.
I like, it's clear, so I like it.
It's. Right. You can go ahead because you think about her, can you use the basis? And all. The only, the only thing is, is that parents have become so much more wingy to their kids. There's been a nice way to say about. They're a little more obsessed with their children's safety. By seeing with the clarity, this hopefully will, they can refer to this policy. But where it will come down to is the interpretation in the schools by the administration as to how they implement.
I think with a lot of policies, that's how that works. You know, I, I think we, I tried, I think what we did this one, we were trying to make it just an easy across the board. If they come in, the parents need to be notified, if they want to talk to the kid first. I, I agree that parents are more involved in different aspects than they may have been in the past. They, they but our, our, our police department already does this. Our Farmington PD, when, when they have, when one, when one of our two SROs is talking to a kid, they've already done all this on the front end. They, they walk in and they can already say, I've already talked to the parents. Or they'll walk in and say to the administrator, have you talked to, have you talked to the parents yet? We need to let them know that we're going to be talking to, to their child.
When, when there's a when there's a gap, it will be at the school with the administrator.
I, I think so.
They have to approve how their students are being questioned or interviewed, correct? Because the situation that I'm aware of is that it did not take place. The contact to the parents didn't take place. The student waived that opportunity. They, they were asked, but they chose not to because they felt comfortable. Later, the parent was concerned that they weren't contacted. I feel like it should be, if it were my child, I would want, even though I use the word claiming, it, it, to me, it's they need the oversight over their child.
I, I think that's why this is written.
That's why, yeah.
I think that's why this says, it doesn't matter how they present it to you. If they come in, you need to talk to the parents. I, I think that's what we were trying to aim for.
Right.
Because even, even when, even when an officer comes in and just wants to interview someone up as a, a child over something they may have witnessed off-campus.
Right.
There may be other considerations that the parent is aware of that the kid's just not thinking of. So I, I think that's why we were trying to aim for, you're, you're going to talk to the parents first.
So can it be even more explicit in, can, can we make it even more stringent? That no matter what, the child, parents will be contacted before the officers come.
Well, we, sometimes we don't know till the officers actually get there, right? So we, we get a lot of times where the officers walk in and say, I'm here to talk to.
Because I, I definitely do the officers' time, but I also value the rights of the parents.
Right.
That's what I'm giving them.
Right, no, so, so with this, it's basically saying, you can't go talk to the kid.
Without.
With, there, there is one exception. That one exception is CYFD or the police are coming in to do an abuse investigation where the parents are in the suspects.
Exactly.
That, that's the only exception.
And if I read it correctly, I think that was.
I, I think, yes, that, that's the only exception.
That's right.
I, I think this is going to come down to is that if, if this gets proved that there's, at the next administrators meeting, this is one of those topics where we're going through and hitting it and saying.
And those younger.
This is what this is. This is very simple. It doesn't matter who comes in and says they want to talk to a child, if they're a governmental entity, you have to talk to the parents first. And, and just keep it simple.
Trading divorce.
Yes, I, I, well, it, it should be simple for the administrators. It puts it straight on the administrators and so the administrators are the only nexus for this. They have to approve it and, and they have to talk to the parents. But some of this came about because of just when COVID was happening, we didn't have school.
Right.
Every, we did have staff turnover. And so now all of a sudden, you've got secretaries and other people coming in and someone comes in and says, I'm with CYFD and I'm here to see so-and-so, and they go, oh, okay. And the administrator's not in the suite because they're doing their thing. They're, they're, they're working. This is to try and bring this back up, make it a little simpler and, and help even some of our newer administrators understand that. I get it, we, we want to help the police as much as possible. But we're, we're in the business of taking care of the kids and their rights on the front end.
Well, I think it's important that children, parents that are claiming have that right. So, but also, children need to be aware that they should always ask their parents. I don't know how to make that in there where children should always ask their parents before they answer any.
If, if we follow the policy, the way it's written.
Written. It shouldn't be.
It, it won't be a problem because we contacted the parents. It's out of the student's hands as well. I know exactly what you're talking about as a former high school principal. If the officer comes in and they, they read the Miranda juvenile rights. There were many times where the student said, no, I don't want my parent here because for whatever reason, maybe they thought my parent might never find out why they're here. I'm looking at it from the lens of a parent. I send my kid to go to school and learn math and learn how to read, whatever it is, right? And I want to ensure that if something else is happening with my child, I'm aware. And that's what, and that's what it does. So if, the, the, as Mr. Bodie said, it's, it's our, it's our school's responsibility to ensure that we don't allow these outside organizations to talk to these students without them finding the parent. Period.
And I'm a claiming grandma, so.
And it's happened. It happens all the time. Needs to be, there's not been, and it needs to be very clear.
Lisa, okay.
Yes, sir.
There is a lack one on here, which is a page and a half. So when I'm reading it, it is not black and white. It's not clear at all. But I, I'll just try and put it as logical as possible the way I understand and mean it. So we can have an incident. We can have an arrest. We can have students in possession of school property. Some of these could be tied together. If some of them are just isolated incidents, I wonder if we should, like, make a separate, like, J thirty-four hundred point one for an incident in one for an arrest and one for students in possession because in the policy service, right, concern.
Yeah.
The policy service.
Attorney.
Attorney, okay. So there's two words in here that I work with in a legislative fashion. The word shall and the word should. And so when you're reading through this and you're going through different scenarios of an incident, arrest, or student possession, it's hard to tell what you're tying with a parent shall be notified. And when, so like on the third red paragraph on page one, parents should be notified prior to that. But then you go into page two, under an arrest, you see we'll see school staff shall cooperate about a certain opening child in school. Once the student has been taken into custody, parents and guardians should be notified. I think we need to get it more logical and more, who, is it yes or no? Will you, shall is more of a command.
So, so we can.
Should is not.
Right, so with the shall, it's a, it's an action we can control. We can actually control whether or not they talk to our students. With the rest, we cannot control that. So if an officer shows up on scene and let's say we have a student with a firearm or we have something along those lines where they're responding to an active incident and they arrest someone right there, we're not, that's out of our hands. We cannot control that action. We should try and get a hold of the parents and let them know the police are going to try and get a hold of the parents as well. But I, but we can't control it because they're actually literally going to take the kid and walk away.
So there's a release of custody too?
We're going to, we're going to notate, we're going to notate that the kid was taken, but we literally have no control over it. We, we have zero control. We can't, we can't stop an arrest from occurring if the police determine that our arrest is occurring. So we're going to try our best to let a parent know, hey, your kid just got arrested and taken away. But if we can't get a hold of the parents and the police get a hold of them, then that's fine. But, but one is an action, on that first page, that's an action that we're controlling on the front end. We're controlling the access to them talking to the child. And we shall let the parents know before that action occurs. With the other one, that, that should reflects that we oftentimes don't have control over that action.
So that applies to that situation and.
Correct.
To be online, I tried to talk through email for this, but it was just getting too complicated for like, what outcome do you want of these certain situations? But I wonder if it's just too undetermined. Can't predict the outcome, what your next step.
Sometimes, some, yeah, sometimes we can't. So the principals, what we, what we worked with was what the principals were having a problem with, with just the certain, with just the interviews and interrogations, talking to a kid on the front end. Because that's where they were running into all their problems was at the front door. Stuff that was occurring afterwards, whether it be a school threat where someone was arrested or a firearm found on campus or stuff like that, they weren't having problems with that because to them, it made, it made sense. They couldn't stop the arrest. They were just going to let the parents know if they could. And then, and then the police have a procedure that they have to notify the parents of a juvenile if they take them into custody. And so that's why we put the should in there. We're kind of the backup to the police letting the parents go on.
And so that front, that front door concept leads me to another comment I have about why are we taking up the form of an arresting officer signing a mother ID that was requested for an arresting officer? Shouldn't that be kind of like an, procedures that were followed? Should someone question that?
A, a, a form that they're signing. Or the, for signature of arresting officer?
Yes, oh, under the arrest area on page three. Should we keep that to show that ID was requested and that the arresting officer did show the ID just in case?
Well, so the arresting officer has to identify themselves no matter what. So they're going to have to identify themselves as a law enforcement officer. I, I've never, in my twenty-three years in law enforcement, I never signed a kid out. I, I mean, I, when I arrested a juvenile, I arrested a juvenile and I was in a uniform and I had a badge and, and I had those things. There was no doubt that I was the person arresting a student, a juvenile. I've never seen this form, this, this signing, this arresting, a, a thing, so I don't, I don't know if it, it felt like it was an artifact because I've never found the form. It, it, it doesn't, I, I've never seen it. It's not in a drive. I, it feels like an artifact from long ago and different boards, before, before electronics were a thing, where we logged kids in and out and said when kids were taken.
So maybe that go back to the, the concept of law enforcement, have a higher recording than the school.
I, I think so. I, I, I think, you know, we do verify when, when people come in that they're, like CYFD doesn't wear uniforms, right? So when CYFD comes in and they say they want to talk to Billy Smith, we make them show us an ID and show us that they are a member of CYFD. There are some schools that, that fill out something saying that CYFD is checking in through our visitor management system and that they're coming to see so-and-so. There's a school that likes paper and they take a copy of the ID and they write down who, who they're coming to see. But we have to verify that, that somehow. If they didn't bring in an ID, I'd be calling, the schools would be. If they didn't bring in an ID, I'd be calling, the schools would be calling CYFD and saying, this person says they're your employee. Um, they, they have to be vetted somehow. But it's easy to vet the police officers. They come in with their stuff. Um, but for the instance where we had the marshal service show up, Baskill actually thought he was a private investigator and asked him for his ID and he showed his marshal credentials and that's how they knew who he was.
Okay.
Because either they're, they're playing close people.
Okay. So they always sign up, so.
No. So that some of this, some of this is coming about because of manpower issues. So in the past, when the marshal service wanted to get information, they would actually go to Farmington PD and say, can your SRO go talk to so and so and get this information? Everything funneled through the SROs because we had nine of them. Now we don't have nine. And so it's not uncommon because we don't have nine, um, that they can't get a Farmington PD guy. And so now they're coming in and they're, they're coming in themselves. And we're starting to see agencies we've never seen before walking through the door.
Of the past teams.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I understand. No, I understand your contention. I, you know, a lot of this, we just paid attention to that front end that the principals told us they were having problems. Or that they were confused.
And I think Lisa, just to clarify, you were really concerned that maybe an officer could be impersonating an officer? Or just, um, even if they're in uniform?
I, well, the impression I got is that you're, it's almost a chain of custody thing. You want to show why the kid's not in the school. And who took, who took the kid?
It just goes back to, is this an incident outside of school, in school, an arrest? That's obviously on the law enforcement, students in possession, I understand that. I think it's the gray area of incidences where there's something going on. We don't know what it is and we're trying to pinpoint what it is. Do we have different steps for things that we do not know that happen for sure? And do we have the order of steps right for when, like, like, uh, when an arrest, I think by the time we see an arrest, they know they're gonna do that, just like I said. But in the gray areas, you have the right steps to document them.
I, I think, I think we're lucky in that we do have a police department and sheriff's office that have worked with the schools a lot. Um, they don't come to schools to arrest kids for things that occur outside of schools normally unless they, unless there's a exigency, some emergency they're trying to deal with. For the most part, when they're doing an arrest at the school, they're doing an arrest at the school because of something that happened at the school. I mean, they've responded, they're there and they're doing it because of that.
So they're mostly in the.
It's in the moment. It's, it's happening from A to B, A to C to D is all happening right then and there um, because it's A incident.
Um, except for those other areas like, well, we see by feet. So that's another area.
Well, CYFD doesn't, CYFD doesn't arrest any kids. Um, they're, they are specifically there to do investigations. Um, they may take kids into protective custody, but that's not a arrest. That's a, they're, this child's been abused. They cannot go home. I'm going to take the child with me to a foster home or something like that. That's, that's, uh, that's different than this, that when CYFD walks in the door, they're coming in asking to interview a child about an incident. Um, for the most part, uh, it's, they don't have arrest powers. Um, JPO may come in occasionally, but they're juvenile probation office. But even then, they're usually arresting children outside of the school environment. They're after a drug test at the JPO office or at an incident in the middle of life. They are coming to our school and doing it.
Okay. So I basically just wanted to.
Sure.
So the incident is, because they're not all going to be the same.
They're not. That, that's why the principal's writing for guidance.
So really the only thing we changed is the one paragraph saying how we're gonna contact parents. So if there's other things within this policy under searches, notice of certain policy, if you may search. If you want to make recommendations, you can.
Yeah, we can.
This is what, that's what, that's what the reading and editing step is. So if you have other suggestions beyond striking the first paragraph or the second paragraph under interviews and adding what we haven't read, the rest of that stuff is already followed.
What's interesting is when I read the policy throughout the year, when I got onto the board, it didn't, it was clear. And when we come here and we take out things and like hear things throughout the past eleven months, you know, the real world situation doesn't fit these things. And then I'm thinking, oh, maybe I didn't. It, it just was very unclear at this point. So this was earlier than I saw it, but it was. One thing we're just doing, if I'm, if I'm correct, you do. Um, is you can send those suggestions in, in whatever color that you want to verify, whatever it is the position that you're moving to. Address, whatever, yeah. And in that way you can give you clarification and then we can look at it and say, yeah. It just seems like I have to like take this paragraph and apply it to that situation where take this and maybe apply that to that. You know, I just had to.
Yeah, we only left it, we only dealt with the one section of the principal grabbing the shoulders.
It just. Yeah, interviews.
Yes.
I love that you're an analyst. I love that.
We, we, we really didn't though. It's, it was already there. Interviews were already there. Um, probably labeled wrong. So anything that, any suggestions that you have that make it more clear than you guys concerning your policy?
Or like more, I don't want more cases to happen, but sometimes. How low is that or high? What could really happen? Different faces.
You, it, it would be nice if we could write a board policy for everything that happened. Eleven thousand students and fourteen hundred people.
Reading it off tone.
Not gonna happen.
So, but that's.
The key here is.
Key here, it's reading, so.
But it is reading, but the other key is that we want, we want to notify parents when, um, these things arrive. Period.
So I guess really the easiest thing I would do is make that the very first sentence. Like parents will be, shall be, should be notified in, in all aspects of this policy. That'd be the easiest thing I would say. Because if you like it the way it is, then that takes out really the key thing that Hunter's talking about is the parents' rights. Two.
Correct. Do you do that?
But we'll have to find that magic word, shall, should. Which behavior? It depends on incident, incident, arrest or student possession. Know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We can work on it. Well, which one? For each incident? Well, it sounds like the parents should be notified for each time difference. Except for. Should. Right.
Well, so.
The exemption. Yeah, and maybe add an exemption like in another sense, just right behind it.
But I, I think, I think that's gonna come back to if you want to break the policy up. Because we, we don't notify parents when they're doing a search of a locker or a bag. Um, we, because searches are, searches are not interviews or interrogations. They oftentimes don't involve law enforcement. And that's, that's here. It says, notice of searches. Um, the, the. And it, that's actually that whole second page just, just deals with searches. Um, because that's, when, when they made this policy, whenever they did, it looks like they tried to put anything that has a nexus that leads to law enforcement all goes into this one policy, J thirty-four hundred. Um, so starting with policy, with everything in this policy, parents shall be notified that, that will muddy up your waters with searches, which is about half this policy.
And other exemptions.
And, and I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying that that's, that does have that effect in that area.
So I just, so like on the arrest, once the student has been taken into custody, because the child was in school. He's still been in the hall.
What do you mean they weren't?
If there's, it says, well, it's not a very, it indicates an attempt to take the student into custody then school staff shall cooperate and locate the child at school, not there, but even if the parent.
They weren't there?
If they weren't there, they would be a level four. So I.
Okay, I would agree. I hear the whole question. Um, if this, if the arresting officer comes to the school and the student's not there, do we notify the parent?
No.
I would say that we'd be interfering with.
More law, law.
We, we are. That would be obstruction of investigation.
Yeah.
And, and we're, and let me be clear, even if they came to the school and said they were coming to arrest Billy Smith, we're not gonna stop them from arresting Billy Smith. We're just gonna call the parents and let them know that they arrested Billy Smith or that they're in the process of arresting Billy Smith. We, we can't, we can't stop the police from doing a lawful arrest.
This is very rare, by the way. We're not arresting people every day in our school.
No. So last year I think we had a total of one arrest um, at a high school. Uh, they, the police generally, no matter which agency, uh, go get a warrant and summon the kid in court or in the juvenile probation or something like that. They, they only arrest in emergency situations that, that they have to. So, um, I think the one last year was, uh, someone that battered three or four of our staff members. Um, I think we had, there might've been two because I think we had a gun in a car. But that was, that's all I can think of. We, we don't arrest out of schools, apparently.
Your list is clear to me now, now that I know the authority and I have chair. It just goes back to the. It was. But it seems to me, it seems pretty clear to me that we're not modifying that area via interrogation. These end works of clarity that gives me uh, contact with the parents, no matter what, the, the interrogation or interview, which I think was the money.
It was. I, so I think, I think some of the older principals thought that the only time they really needed to call the parents is if the kid was gonna get themselves in trouble and their parent, wanted the parent there. Over time, um, it became muddy to the principals and to the officers when they were coming in that they needed to explain if they're doing an interview and interrogation. And then as we, as times have changed, since this policy was first put together, parents probably want to be involved more if, if they come in and just even want to talk to their kid on an interview and just to, just to see what's going on. And so, um, you had inconsistency amongst the schools as some were allowing police to talk to kids on interviews and some were not. They were all being consistent on interrogations for the most part. If he's a suspect, I need the parent here. I, I need the parent to know. Um, but it, it just got a little muddy and this was, this was their way of trying to get it.
Or maybe just the topic provides that a little bit better like at the beginning of this bit. For the section of the policy, yeah. Just move it to the top the easiest way. That's what I was saying.
Correct. To, to the top of the interview interrogation portion?
Move it to the very top. Cause that's, if anyone reads that, parent's gonna claim mine first. That's, that's be the easiest.
All right. Number nine B approval step under policy G dash two nine three six. Let me make the policy presented by Mr. Ray. Pat.
So I brought this to the board last month. I did not receive any feedback. I'm curious to see if any of you received any feedback because this is a policy that we have been using for fifteen years. So.
Any questions and feedback? Uh, no. Okay. So Vice President Colley, I recommend the board approve changes to policy G two nine three six as presented. You have a question?
So moved, Thomas Stradlin. Action.
We'll call, we'll, Williams.
Hi.
This next one.
Hi.
For the, I, Mr. Stradlin.
Hi.
Approval step, changes to policy G dash three one three four, leaving donation policy presented by.
And I did not receive any feedback here. Uh, we just have that one part that we were going to get rid of to allow people that are teachers to donate to people that aren't teachers or EAs to donate to custodians. Uh, the policy, the way it read says that only certain groups could donate to the same group. I didn't hear any feedback from anybody and I think it's the right thing to do to allow anyone that wants to donate things to someone else.
Things admirable for anybody that works for the department.
Yeah.
We should allow it and encourage it.
Vice President Colley, I recommend the board approve changes to policy G three one three four, leaving donation policy as presented. You have a question?
So moved.
Second. For Paul, Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
For the, I, Mr. Stradlin.
Hi.
Approval step of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar presented by Mr. Pat.
Man. Busy tonight. Um, we don't have a lot of choices with the calendar, the way the state legislature has set up the system. We heard from our principals that they wanted to have one more day at the beginning of the year to get ready before kids came. Uh, we have four professional days scheduled, which is what we had last year. Three are at the beginning and one is at the end for next year. Um, there really isn't a lot of change. We're kind of stuck in the spring break as we always are based upon one, say, my college does it. Most of the county is gonna go with the same spring break. There really isn't, you know, much to do with the calendar anymore because it's pretty well told to us. I will say that I did have three teachers this year because I keep track of these things, tell me that we should have a balanced calendar. And my reply to them is always, that needs to come from the community. So if you feel that way, find people that feel that way and talk to them and bring us the fact that you would like to see a balanced calendar. These calendars get started, I want to say August seventh. And they're done before Memorial Day.
And by balance, do they mean around?
Start July twentieth. Yeah, two weeks off in the fall, two weeks off in the winter, two weeks off in the spring and about June or so, so you don't have such a big gap in the summer. Las Cruces is trying it out. Albuquerque has a few schools that have tried it out. I don't know about other schools in the state.
Uh, I think Rio, Rio Rancho.
Rio Rancho might've tried it and.
See, this is our first year and committing it there.
Yeah, I, I'm just telling you, this is the first time I've ever had somebody tell me that.
I think the data is the fourth day. You don't have as much of like drop off after a certain break. Like distributed performance.
I would think that we would create a, a survey of some sort for the district. I would, I would venture that this is a very first year. I mean, it's almost like the Monday half day off versus the Friday half day off. They, it was very touching. I'm sure, I'm sure people have. I think everybody district has adjusted to our new schedule. Right now I think that's been a little more consistent from what I've heard. But I could also help with like childcare too.
Sure.
Cause two weeks off and two, two, you know, that would be your market for babysitters.
The main reason I brought the calendar now is I'm already getting the questions, you know, we're planning trips and that type of thing. So I want to get something out there.
But yes, in, in terms of a balanced calendar, it would not be a, it would be a year-long study. It would be a ton of surveys, right? That's not what he's asking.
No, no.
But yeah, obviously.
I just.
Well, I, I brought this because I'd like for you to prove it so that I can. Well, I, I brought this cause I'd like for you to prove it so that I can.
I, I have received an interesting email from Jasmine Fear and her partner, um, Peter Burns. And they were requesting input, um, on my perspective. Did you get this at all? Did you want me on screen? Okay. Um, actually it is. Um, it was an interesting, it was actually more towards time starts and, which actually does have to do with calibrating. And the question was, uh, whether the current school hours and their impact on students' mental health specifically in terms of attendance, participation. And overall, overall productivity. And they wanted it for an AP government class and Rick, Rick Burns was the one that's the instructor. And it, so it was for AP class. But anyway, the demands placed on students during this time can be overwhelming with long school days, often the truth is fatigue, stress, lack of focus. And they were curious as to how, what my stance was. Well, I went and kinda did some research on. School hours and how that affected children and students. And there's actually, um, some pretty great stuff out there. That, um, if, if you're more consistent with kids and start at a reasonable hour. Um, but then I said, well, basically, even if you give kids more sleep time, are they gonna take advantage of it? Or are they gonna just stay up later and just have to get up anyway? And then there's other, you know, there was other variables. So our start times and our end times on our, our school days. For our calendars affect how many days we actually use. Right now, we are at one eighty. And we, right?
One eighty-one.
One eighty-one. And we start at, uh, eight or seven fifty.
The times.
And go down to.
Affect the calendar. I mean, we have a certain number of days.
To a half day.
Yeah, if we did that.
Yeah, if we had any other variable. So that was just, um, an aside that I thought was very interesting that we could really. Look into that. But again, it's like digging into all the.
Well, we are at the minimum amount of time. By time. But yeah, you can certainly adjust it. So at an elementary, if we go eight to two thirty, you could go nine to three. But we can't, if, I mean, you could certainly add more time, but you can't take any time away. We're already at the, we're at the ten sixty or ten, or ten eighty.
So for the, the average, right?
You could add more days.
So say an average student, you know, what their, what their preferences are. It is gonna vary. So, I, I just thought it was an interesting request and made me start thinking about how our start and end time. Or, you know, how that affects our, our student.
We've had discussions with high schools especially about starting later. We run into these concerns. Who's gonna watch the elementary kids if the high school kids are not out? After school. And parents, how are they gonna drop off? High school, there, there's a lot of issues there, but I think research. Correct me if I'm wrong, but research does say that it helps older kids to start a little bit later. We start our mid schoolers at eight thirty.
And I think that's reasonable. That's my personal opinion, but.
But, but the number of days isn't gonna affect the start.
I think there are more issues too, because what I hear purchase age, yeah, it might be the start time. But Mr. Deal's also done a great job of saying, okay, if our start time is this and our end time is this, do we have to have seven full class periods in that day? Or can it look different? So if kiddo doesn't feel so overwhelmed, seven hours, seven times a day with seven finals within a week. Yes, there's a lot of different ways to even think about that piece that we've been trying to end up.
Well, if you started, you started at nine, then our end time in high school is four. And that means then you have practice.
Or that goes later and then.
Yeah, I mean, there's all those.
I get it. I just thought they could be interested that that is out there. And, and interestingly enough, it made me start thinking about where. Where would be, where would be first? So, anyway, carry on.
So yes, you got this from the AP government. Yeah, yeah. So I don't know who else got emailed, but yes, uh, I've answered several of them this week. Not about time. Okay, so Vice President Cole, I recommend the board approve the twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar as presented.
Your motion? Second? I'll second it. We'll call, Ms. McWilliams. Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Orley, I, Mr. Stradlin. Alright, closed session from the school. Board of Education will adjourn it to closed session pursuant to New Mexico. NMSA ninety-seven A ten fifteen dash one H two to discuss limited personnel matters specifically. To discuss school litigation and confidential safe school plans. Motion to adjourn to closed session by. Seconded by.
I'm Mr. Stradlin.